Mayor Protem Sloan, thank you.
Could you please join with me in saluting the flag of our great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sloan.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Vera Papa.
Thank you very much. This evening, we are gathered here together to accept a donation, a generous donation, and have a community discussion about its placement. What I would like to do this evening is to begin with a staff report, and then we will go to audience comments, and then after that, we will have council discussion and a vote. Okay, so with that, city manager, if we have a staff report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So our community development director, Jim Basham, will present this item to you tonight. Jim?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you indicated, we have a very unique and generous opportunity to receive a very historic structure. It's a cottage, and it is a historical sense that it was, it's over 100 years old. It was during the early days of the city's history. It represents the Anaheim Landing area, so if everyone is familiar with what occurred before the city became a city, many, many years ago, in the late 1800s and early 1900s, the Anaheim Landing area was a very specific and prominent location that exemplified the Seal Beach area. It was an area that was used not only for the portions of import and export of goods and commodities from ships, but it also was a visitor and a destination for many residences, and also for individuals who didn't live in this particular area, but more inland, Southern California, who would use this landing area or this beach area for the purpose of housing. And being so close to the beach, they constructed cottages. The cottages sat on what's called stilts or above the surface area because the cottages were placed so close to the water that during high tide, they actually would receive a lot of the ocean water. So this is located at 342 12th Street. The property owners, Don and Melanie Blinney, are generous to offer this cottage to the city. It's been in the family for many, many generations. They're giving us just a short period of time in order to receive this generous donation. We believe that this can be accommodated. One of the locations that is, that's prominent for us to feature this donation as a museum is adjacent or parallel to the red Charlie car along our Green Belt area. And if it is the wishes of City Council, then certainly we can move forward pursuant to the recommendation that's before you tonight in the staff report to accept this generous donation. So that concludes staff's presentation. We'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions from the council of the staff before we open the comments? No? All right, then, let's go. Is there, are there members of the public that would like to address us? Yes, please. And please keep your comments to five minutes. Thank you.
Charles Antos, Seal Beach. I want to talk about only one thing, the Green Belt. There is a specific plan on the Pacific Electric Right-of-Way, which was adopted, recommended by the Planning Commission and adopted by the City Council. That specific plan calls for a library, a small parking lot, lots of trees, the red car, and no other structures. So consequently, if you are going to place this building on the PE Right-of-Way, anywhere, it requires public hearings before the Planning Commission and before the City Council to adopt an amendment to this specific plan. The specific plan is in, it was adopted by the council, and just like any other plan, it has the same force of law. It has to be amended. You just can't do whatever you want without amending it. And not only that, you're going to require a California Coastal Commission permit, because this is in the coastal zone, prior to moving it and placing it. So I'm just pointing that out before you vote to do something without going through the proper procedure.
Scott Newton, Seal Beach Lions Club and Seal Beach Lions Foundation. Five years ago, I started to have my eyes on that little house. In fact, we had some discussions with people in town about how can we make this part of our heritage? And somehow, here we are in our 100th year, and it's coming to us. What an amazing opportunity. It really is. So when the Lions heard about this early in the week, and we have been really focused on what can we do for the foundation, for the centennial, and we're involved in many ways, and we thought, this is something we want to be part of. So the club, we put a blast out, and members of the club all came together, and then last night, we had an emergency board meeting. And at that emergency board meeting, our board of directors voted to do two things. The second, I will tell you, or someone else will tell you. But the first part was that our Lions Club is willing to be the fundraising arm for this effort. It's not going to be free, we know that. And that we would be happy to be the 501(c)(3), the charitable organization that would raise the funds to renovate this beautiful piece of history for our community. We don't have a lot of details yet. Of course, we need to discuss it much more, but we went as far last night as making a pledge, which our president will come up and talk about in a few minutes, and selecting a chairperson to lead a community fundraising effort, not a Lions Club fundraising effort, a community effort. So we're, the Lions Club is fully in support of this effort, both moving it, acquiring it, and the location you've chosen, we think it's wonderful. And with that, I'll end my discussion, and maybe Deb Machen will come up, because she has been chosen to be our chairperson for this fundraising effort, should we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Thank you, Scott. Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager, and community. My name is Deb Machen, and I am honored to chair the fundraising committee for this amazing community effort to renovate and protect 115-year-old historical treasure that is so generously being donated to our city by the Blinney family. After conferring with Planning Director Jim Basham and key staff, it has been determined that an estimated $50,000 will need to be raised in order to complete the minimal renovations necessary to repair and secure the cottage. I want all of you to know that since early this morning, my phone has been buzzing all day long with numerous, and I mean 20-plus, offers from residents, business owners, and several of our community organizations and leaders to help raise these funds. In addition to the generous donation from the Lions of using the 501(c)(3) status and working as the fundraising arm and allowing us as a community to work through them, we've already received an anonymous donation of $1,000. So with the help of our entire community, I have no doubt that we will succeed in raising these funds in very short order. Now, I would like to close by offering my sincere gratitude to the Blinney family for giving us this wonderful piece of history during this, our centennial year. And with that, I would like to bring up Lions President Mike.
City Council Mayor. As you know, if you give us the opportunity to become the fundraising arm, we voted last night to start out the fund with a check for $5,000. I challenge all other organizations in the city to come on board and help raise the money so that we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Vince Bautiford. I'm publisher of the Sun newspaper and also president of the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce and an Old Town resident. So first, just on behalf of the Sun newspaper, we're very excited about this community project, and I would like to pledge fundraising support for the Lions Club and this great effort to help raise funds, and we're delighted to offer up to $5,000 of advertising in their effort. So that should help.[694.45][694.45][applause] Also, this morning, the Chamber of Commerce had its regular monthly board meeting, and we talked about this project. It consumed quite a bit of our time, and I can tell you that the Chamber of Commerce is absolutely delighted and thrilled at this opportunity that's in front of the city. And anything that the Chamber can do to help enhance or help the project, we're ready to hear those things on how we, as a Chamber of Commerce, can engage. And then finally, I've been watching social media, you know, that Facebook thing. I'm not a big fan of that, but I thought it was interesting on the Seal Beach, California page, there were, Nate Crandall posted that picture, and about 58 comments, but ranging, and the question was, where should the city move this historic house? And there are 12 people, local people, that commented on here, and they specifically called out the Green Belt and also adjacent to the red car. I thought that their comments were interesting, both pro and con, so I'll just hand this off, and you can review it later. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Ellsworth. Good evening, everyone. I am also a proud Seal Beach Lion and a Chamber member and a brick person as of yesterday.[781.31][781.31][laughing] But I just want to say this. In Hollywood, we have these houses and these homes that they're just destroying, and other people are coming in and taking. They don't have a historic society in Hollywood. We don't have one here either, but this is a piece that we have, that we can get. And I just for one am behind this because this is what we have, and it's so generous that this family is letting us take this from us. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Harvey. I am an Old Town resident, and I am a preservationist. Since I've been in town, I have seen so many homes destroyed, torn down, never to be seen again. I've taken pictures of them because I just loved the looks of them. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It is something for the next generation, so they can see how, all of you wonderful people that grew up in Seal Beach, what you got to do. You know, from what somebody told me, they put them on wheels and wheeled them. I mean, I just think it's marvelous, and this might not ever happen again. Would you say it's the last one in town? I am a business owner, and I've got to tell you all and the audience, so many people come in from everywhere, and they love Seal Beach. Why? Because it's still old-fashioned. That's why. It still has the charm. And once it's gone, it's going to end up being like Huntington Beach, boring, stucco. I mean, I like Seal Beach, I mean Huntington Beach, don't get me wrong, but it doesn't have the charm. It's like Seal Beach and San Clemente are about the only two towns left like this. And we have to let people know how marvelous it is. And I think next to the red car, and I know there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump through, but it'll work out. It will work out, and I think it's a great location, and it's historical, along with the red car, which I wish we still had. Anyway, I just wanted to let you all know what people say when they come into the store. They love Seal Beach, and this is just another plus. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name's Cliff Page. I'm a resident of Seal Beach, and thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you folks. I live actually on 8th Street, and I was a little concerned. I haven't heard a lot about this, what I've read in the newspaper, and the financing was the first thing that came to my mind, who is going to actually pay for this. I was happy to hear that the Lions Club's willing to come in and give their support and raise it, but there's a lot of questions that I have that aren't answered. And the presentation, I was expecting to hear information about how much it's going to cost, and they say there's a generous donation. From what I read in the Sun newspaper, it appeared that the property owners were going to demolish the house. But my concern as resident is, how much is this going to cost? How much are the Lions Club, they're expecting to raise, and I'm glad to hear that they're doing that, but how much are they going to have to raise in order to make this occur? Is this house going to be something where the public's going to be able to visit, and they're going to be able to go inside the house? My house was built in 1915, and we wanted to preserve as much as we could when we moved in a few years ago. And unfortunately, when we moved in, there was so much damage because the house had been left unattended for so many years. There was significant rot and a lot of termite damage, of course, because of a beach town. And so we had to invest a lot of money in our house, and we kept the original structure as much as we could. But the reality is, after we had to get it up to code, the entire process, the house does not look anything, we weren't able to save much. I have left is a newspaper that I found on the walls that was dated 1950, talking about how the Republicans and the Democrats couldn't get along.[1060.58][1060.58][laughing] That's about all I have left of the house. And I, my intention was to preserve as much of the house as I could, but I simply couldn't because the damage that the house has sustained over the number of years. And so my concern is, I like the, I like the attempt to keep the Old Town feel, that's why I moved to Seal Beach, and I appreciate that. I wouldn't want it to be like Huntington Beach. But personally, me as a resident, I'm sitting, and I want to hear more, I want to hear answers to my questions, to what, how much is this going to cost the city? How much, is this going to cost any of us taxpayers? And the other thing is the placement. And I heard the first gentleman speak, and there's concerns about, and I know what I had to do with my house, just to get a renovation, I actually had to go down to the Coastal Commission, spent two months at the Coastal Commission, and I will, all I was doing was a simple renovation. I wasn't rebuilding my house. And the Coastal Commission, I mean, you folks, I don't have to tell you what the Coastal Commission is like dealing with. So the placement of it is a concern of mine as well, and so I think that all needs to be taken in consideration when, in deciding, where are we going to move this? Is it only going to be in that, in that place next to the red car? That seems to be a good place, but maybe it's not the best place. Are there alternatives to that, to that placement? Is there somewhere else where we can move it where it'd be more appropriate? We wouldn't have as much issues. Like I said, I live on 8th Street, and unfortunately, it seems that that portion of the street gets, does not get attended to. The parking, for one, is horrendous, and I know Mayor Deaton, that's been brought to your attention, and you're addressing it. And now, as far as we're concerned, on 8th Street, now we'll have potentially a house sitting there that was not there before. I can tell the council that my family's played in that exact same spot. And for us personally, it's not where we'd want that house to be, even though we appreciate everything that this, this house would bring. So those are my concerns, and I would hope that throughout this process, that some of those questions would be answered, because, again, I had to come straight from work because it was that important to me to come down here and express that. So thank you.
Thank you for coming.[1199.58][1199.58][applause] Jim, did you get those questions down?
Yes.
Okay. We will address those questions as soon as I close the public comments.
Carla Watson, 52-year resident of Seal Beach, and my whole life work since I was in my 20s was to preserve this Old Town. I started out with the Greenie Group years ago, and there were even some people who didn't want the library, because on that side of town, there was less green. And the whole idea of the Green Belt, and then there were other people, candidates, who ran for office, who wanted to put parking on the Green Belt, and we denied that. I love this little house, and contrary to what other people have said, Barbara Roundtree, 25 years ago, checked out that house and talked to the people and wanted to put it on the Green Belt. I just think the process needs to be longer. I think the house needs to be saved. I'm just not quite sure if this is the right place. As I drove over here, I noticed that there was a group of people picnicking on the area right by that area. It's a really big thing to put another structure on an open space that we worked so hard to keep. I appreciate, I think the Lions are fantastic to come forward this quickly, but I notice in the audience that there's not a general public. I don't know how this was advertised, or who was told, whether you blasted out council people to all the people, but I know a lot of people, it was a very short notice. I don't, I noticed certain groups are here because they were told, and then they met last night, and so on and so forth. But I don't know that you haven't as much input as you need. I think the save, I don't know if it's possible to save the house and put it, someone suggested me, they called right before I came, they said, well, I don't know, I can't remember, Mr. Basham, if you talked about the history of this, I mean, what happened in World War II, and how they had to move these houses, and how it was, it's huge patriotic. I mean, that history part of it is amazing. Those people had to give up their houses. I just think it needs time. I'm just not quite sure. Back east, what they do is they dismantle things and they number them, and then they put them back together in villages. Or they move it someplace else, City Yard or whatever, until they can get the funds or whatever in order to place it in the proper way. I just think it needs much more input if you're going to put it on the Green Belt. And I think there's a lot of people here who would like to be heard, who didn't hear even about this. So thank you.[1363.42][1363.42][applause]
Linda Kruger, Old Town. I'm also on 8th Street, and I'm going to piggyback on the last two speakers. I feel that it's been kind of rushed, and I think the placement, I think it's great to have this, but I think we need to figure, give us other alternatives of placement for this little house, and not just put it in between right there where the car is and the library. So hopefully, we'll be able to take more time and find a better place to have that. Thank you.[1410.42][1410.42][applause]
Council Mayor, members of staff, the public, Seth Eker, resident of Old Town. You know, I'm reminded of a phrase that in each day, we only have the same 24 hours. And how we choose to spend those 24 hours is pretty important, because we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. It's very interesting to me to hear people assert things like, they don't know, there's not notice, special groups were notified and not others. Last time I checked, this body and the city attorney is pretty diligent in making sure that proper notice is given, both at City Hall, at the newspaper, at the library, in many different ways. So I find that argument oddly disturbing. You have a group of people, the Lions, who live, work, and serve in this community. And you've got $6,000 already committed out of 50. There's probably another 10 that could come out easily. So let me be clear, all this idea of delay is not necessarily effective. We need to strike now. We need to strike surgically on this property. This is a narrow window of gift-giving, and I would recommend to the council, perhaps if it desires a greater degree of input or hearing, that a historical commission be formed to talk about these issues in the future. But now, we need to deal with this bungalow and making sure that it's here. And I want to be clear, too, as a director of Run Seal Beach, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the organization merely as one of the directors, that I make the commitment to go back to them and find out what the Run might be willing to do for this project. So there are a lot of organizations that are here. I'm co-chair of the Centennial. This is in our centennial year. It would be a tragedy to let this go if we cannot save it. It would be a tragedy and somewhat of a horror to watch it be demolished. And no, I haven't lived here 50-plus years. I've lived here eight years, but I can tell you, I bought a Centennial brick. I can tell you, I got married here. I can tell you that I'm staying here. And this means a lot to me. It means a lot to the fact that one of my dearest friends and co-chair of the Centennial is the lead on this, and it means a lot, I think, to hopefully, all of you and our staff. I know our city manager, our mayor, and all of you have made it a priority to keep Seal Beach of a certain character. Who else, what other city can show this beautiful piece of history if we don't? I don't know. But again, I urge you, take the opportunity in front of you. Take the gift, take the service. We're willing to do the work. We're willing to make it happen, and I assure you, it will. Thank you.[1627.15][1627.15][applause]
Bill Ayers, old-time resident of Seal Beach, founder of the Seal Beach 5 and 10K. So you know how long I've been around. I think anytime you start on an endeavor, there's always going to be people that throw bricks in the way, and you kind of stumble on them, but you have to work through that. As far as the funding goes, I really think, no matter what it costs, these Lions are going to come up with it. They might have, and I'm not a Lions Club member. They, you know, said they have a membership drive for $50,000, but whatever it costs, that's the least of the worry. I think you need to plan ahead and work through the obstacles so you can place this on the Green Belt. Next to the red car, that's sort of the historic area. This building is not large, so it's not going to take up a lot of space. As far as people picnicking there, this is 4th of July weekend, people are going to be picnicking everywhere this weekend. And they will still have a lawn, they could still picnic around this building. And so I encourage you to move forward, as Seth said, as quick as we can. Don't lose this opportunity, because you'd be very sorry if we did. Thank you.[1726.01][1726.01][applause]
Hi, my name is Libby Applegate, and I was part of the group that helped save the Green Belt. And even, even though we all just agreed that nothing would be built on the Green Belt, well, the library was built there. I don't know if they went through the Coastal Commission or not. But I'm an oral historian, and I've been an oral historian for 23 years. I start out by taping it and then writing stories about who I interviewed. And I can't believe that one of these people, that every one of these people would love to have this house. And even though I worked hard to make sure that maybe that there's nothing going to be put on the Green Belt, well, this has got to be done, and I agree with a lot of people that approve this. Thank you.[1798.33][1798.33][applause]
Could we have your name, please?
Oh, God, I forgot. What is it? My name is Gordon Chanks, resident of Seal Beach for 44 years. Somewhat known, somewhat cutstout, but that's all right. Anyway, my first contact with this house came when Marilyn Hastings was on the city council, you have gone back that far. And there was a question about it at that time. And then the Historical Society used it to store historical records for a number of years and then for some reason, that got changed. And they told the Historical Society to get the stuff out, which they did. The major reason of saving this is that most people who come to Seal Beach do not recognize what that lower picture represents. Before air conditioning, if you wanted to cool off in the summer, you had to come down here. It was hot in Anaheim, it was hot in Pasadena. And so if you had, if you were lucky enough to have a car, you came out here because the beach area was cool. But if you weren't wealthy enough to afford a rich fancy hotel, et cetera, you had a tent or you had a cottage like this. It seems to me that it would be nice to have this restored. And the interior made out in the same manner that people had back in those days. Now, we're talking 1910 probably, which was pretty crude living. But our young people don't have this background. They have, they turn on the air conditioning, they get on the car, they drive, they don't see what it was like anywhere around here. And I, and also, I think it would be nice to have it fitted out like Williamsburg or someplace like that so that people who normally don't see this kind of stuff would have something to remember about Seal Beach. The red car is one thing, but we could use one small other item. And I don't see any other place but the PE right-of-way for it. I'd like to keep the PE right-of-way sacred and sacred, so let's keep it to the south sacred. But we already have the red car, we have the library, we have Mary Wilson. So this is so small. All I wish is, let's hope that the termites have not totally destroyed it. Because anybody who lives here knows that the termites can destroy almost anything of wood. But anyway, I'd like to see it go on the green belt. And I think it would be a decent addition to our historical heritage. I think.
Good evening, Barbara Barton, Old Town. Speaking of things that are on the green belt, my very favorite thing is the library. And the people here tonight know what fight we had to get that library on that green belt. Coastal Commission, opposition, people were scared to death, children would be ran over if we had cars coming and going from the library. But nonetheless, I think this is a great opportunity to grab this bit of history. I don't know what it's going to cost, how long it'll take, Coastline Commission, but I think we have the vitality in this town to make it happen. And as a board member and the friends of the library, we hope to have a new neighbor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marie Antos. I'm the president of the Historical Society. I would like to ask a few questions. You asked that it was going to be beside it or wherever. I'd like to know exactly where it's going to be. And how big is it? And were we going to take down trees or what? I mean, it's a good idea to buy it. I mean, that's what I deal in, is history. So I'm asking before anybody makes any decisions, to find out what exactly going on and maybe there is a better place for it. I just think it was a quick way, it's just too quick to make a decision. I think more thought needs to be in it and the Lions want to buy it. I think it should be bought. I think they're doing a good job. But I think we should wait and see where other people might want to have it, like the residents of Seal Beach. There might be some other ones that want to put it someplace else, like on the DWP or Gum Grove Park somebody mentioned, or other things that people have called me all day long today and saying, you know, they really don't want it on the green belt. And is this your idea of, did you ask them? And I said, "No, I didn't." So again, everybody talks about the red car, everybody talks about this and that. We also needed funds for things for the red car and I didn't see anybody coming and helping us. And we've been around a long time. We're going to have our 43rd anniversary in August. And again, and who's going to maintain it? What is it going to be used for? These are questions I'd like to know before anybody makes a decision. Also, the Seal Beach Historical Society has a lease on part of that property. So I want to know how far back you guys are going to put it or where? I'd like a little bit more answers. And again, we have a lot of, we have over probably 120 members in the Historical Society. So I'm sure that if I'm asked a question, I'd like to be able to answer that. So I'd like a little bit more information. And again, thank the Lions. We don't need to put it on there right now. If they want to buy it, that's fine, fix it up. That's really nice. I think it's a good community thing that they're doing, but I still like to answer more questions. Thank you.
Jim, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. So you got those questions down so they can be answered?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
My name is Everett Tigder. I have been a resident of Seal Beach off and on for the past 46 years. I think this is a marvelous, wonderful opportunity. I am so pleased with the Lions Club. I'm not a member of the Lions Club, but I would, I would offer a pledge also from, that they have offered. Best wishes to the city council and best wishes to Seal Beach. When I first came here, I can remember various buildings and streaks and there was nothing across Pacific Coast Highway. We have very little left to show our history. Let's do something about it. Thank you.
I want to give you plenty of time so that we've got all the questions. Okay, then seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comments. And I just would like to say that Jim has your questions. We'll have him answer them. I just want to ask the council if they would like to start deliberating first or if you want the questions answered. Mr. Vera Papa asked to go first, so what would you like? Would you like the questions answered?
Well, we might have questions, but you might answer them if you want to go first.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and Jim, you're back on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And whenever the city attorney would like to interject, he's more than welcome. Let me start with the specific plan. The specific plan was created in the 1970s. It was for the purpose of allowing the city to display exhibits of the Seal Beach history. It did not specifically state that no other type of uses other than that was described during that time period was allowed. So during that time period, it describes to what was readily available in order to be put into the green belt area. So the donation of the cottage, which represents a unique part of Seal Beach history, is in compliance with the specific plan. There is no need for it to be amended in this case. Moving on to cost, so staff had an opportunity to evaluate the structure. We had our building official who's a registered engineer. He took a look at the structure, it's in very good shape. For being a structure that's constructed of single walls and all wood, it's in a very, very good state of condition. So with that, that was very promising for us. So we have a very, very small window period to move this structure. It's a once-in-a-lifetime for us to do it. The property owners are eager to move forward to start construction of their brand-new home. They have coastal development approval to do so. They also have coastal development approval to tear down this structure that's existing. And if we don't move within a time period of less now than 30 days, the structure will be demolished. So this is a once-in-a-lifetime for us to move this structure. We estimate the cause for us to relocate the structure, put it on a concrete pad, give us the opportunity at our own pace to evaluate the structure, identify what additional needs and repairs. And it gives us an opportunity to then think about what we're going to use it other than for the fact as a museum. That's first and foremost. It's part of Seal Beach history, it's part of what we believe we need to restore and maintain for preservation for a very, very long time, like we did for the red car. So cost is estimated about $22,500. Additional cost, we've identified as to what we anticipate and what we'll do in the future, including rehabilitation. So the total identification of cause, we don't know until we actually have an opportunity to take a look at it, evaluate the stated conditions of the structure, the floorboards, the below surface, the roof, the rafters, everything. We need to evaluate to determine exactly how much the cost for repairs are going to be. As it relates to the coastal development permit, this is the difference of a habitable versus a non-habitable structure. This is not a structure for which you are going to live in. So that is the difference between a coastal development permit and one that would be considered exempt. Let's see, we discuss condition, urgency. I discuss as to the need for us to relocate it as soon as possible. Removal of any landscaping or existing trees. My staff and I and Public Works Department Engineering, we've had an opportunity to go to the site, we've actually staked the site. We shot the site to look at the elevations and to make sure that we stay within the lease lines that's been established for the red trolley car. That has been done. We believe that we have the pad area that's necessary for us to set this structure onto a permanent foundation. So there's no breach, if you will, or identification that we will cross over into a lease line for the red trolley car.
And we will not be removing any trees, is that correct?
Absolutely. There's no trees that will be removed. And I think that's it.
Okay, so then I have one question for the attorney and that is, Mr. Steele, have you looked at the specific plan and what is your opinion?
I have, Madam, I have the specific plan with me. I would note that there are various references in the specific plan to improvements or public facilities on the green belt. Sometimes the specific plan, for example, on page six, talks about the intent of the city council being that the area be developed as a green belt with some public facilities and limited parking. In other cases, it talks about limited public facilities or improvements. There is a specific list of improvements that is referenced as a brief description of the major improvements to be installed in the right-of-way area. Doesn't say it's the only improvements, it doesn't have any language about no other improvements or anything like that. It lists what it calls the major improvements. And would note that number six in that list speaks to the red car museum and notes that the museum would consist of a restored Pacific Electric red car and exhibits related to Seal Beach's history. So I think the council could interpret that as meaning this is an appropriate area for that type of historical use. I don't think there's any language in this specific plan that says that nothing else is to be provided, these are the only improvements on the green belt. So I, I'm of the opinion that this location would be consistent with the specific plan and wouldn't require an amendment to the specific plan to facilitate this. With regard to the coastal development permit, I just want to elaborate just a bit on what Jim said. First of all, there is, it bears repeating that there's a coastal development permit in effect to allow the demolition of this structure, the removal of the structure from this property. Public Resources Code has an exemption to the permit requirement for improvements to small structures other than residential, single-family residential homes where those improvements won't adversely affect public access. This won't affect public access. Where it doesn't change, involve a change of use, there's no change in use proposed here moving this structure. And if there's no risk of environmental effect. And moving a small shed from one property to another, I don't think could be argued to have a risk of environmental effect. I think it's pretty clear that this is exempt from a coastal development permit requirement, although I note that there is a coastal development permit in effect already to allow the removal of this, this structure. So we're pretty confident in both the specific plan consistency as well as the fact that a coastal development permit is not required to relocate the structure.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other direct questions of staff before I have council discussion? Okay, Mike, you asked to go first.
Thank you, Madam Eaton. If I'm allowed to reflect a little bit, back in the early 80s when I moved to Seal Beach, I had the pleasure of moving into a little bungalow. It wasn't this old of a bungalow, but it was a beautiful bungalow. It was on double lot, redwood walls and the works. It was barely enough for me to scrape the $300 of rent to rent this place with a roommate that we shared. And to my dismay, two or three years later, the landowner passed and the house was sold. I couldn't afford it, I was in college at the time. So I looked for another bungalow. And basically, I moved, to make a long story short, to about four bungalows. And I think one of the bungalows is still around today. And it was really sad for me to see bungalow after bungalow that I couldn't afford to buy or do anything with, basically get torn down and another nice home would be built. So I really think this is, you know, an honor to have this as, as a city. I think it's a great structure. It's the oldest structure probably in the city by far. I just had, you know, I had the same reservations, you know, that a lot of people talked about, you know, it's so fast, it's so, you know, rushed. Where's the money going to come from? How much damage does it have? Where are we going to put it? Why can't we put it on the east side of town or the west side of town? And, but I think, you know, the more I thought about it and talked to people in the neighborhood, you know, the, the red car is the historical site and, you know, it's a good place to have other historical sites. And I don't really consider it building on the green belt, it's a building that's placed on the green belt. I did have a couple of questions and just clarification. This is city property. The Lions Club is not buying this property. It's city property. And I hope, and I know they will, but the Lions Club has to reach across the community to get their input. And I know that there's issues, if you will, but, but I'm sure there's, you know, it's going to be a community effort. And I know we got to do that as a community. As far as the size, I know it's pretty small, but do you know the footprint or the dimensions of it, Jim? I mean, can you just tell us, is it eight by 10 or 20 by 40 or?
It's approximately nine by 25, I believe.
Nine by 20, so it's a pretty narrow structure. So anyway, I'm... So anyway, the interior, I mean, if we had a good picture of the exterior, you said briefly, I mean, it was kind of, there's no walls in it. I mean, there's walls, but that's the exterior wall that you look at, right? It's not like it's insulated walls, so there's not a lot of insulation or...
The wall is the wall.
The wall is.[1139.36][1139.36](LAUGHING) Can you tell us about the interior a little bit? Because we don't get to see that, I mean...
The interior is separated by a single wall. It's a non-insulated wall. So what you have from the exterior wall basically is the other side of the wall from the interior. There's no double walls or anything of that nature.
And finally, I think, you know, it's important that we ask ourselves, what's the request of the owners? I don't know if you talked about that a little bit, but I know they had some requirements. It's been in their family forever, right? 115 years. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, the owners are explaining to the city that they are willing to donate it. They're happy to donate it. They want us to continue to use it for the purpose as a museum, display it in honor of their family, in honor of their grandfather that had the cottage for many, many years. They've enjoyed it for a very long time, and they want to see it represented in that fashion. If not, then they basically asking that we surrender it and give it back to them.
All right. Thank you, that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, Sandra?
Well, I'm looking at this as an opportunity of a lifetime. This will never happen again. It's the only one left. What are you going to do when it's not there anymore? You're going to say, damn, we should have taken it. And you'll be stepping all over yourself for making a mistake. And yes, it's quick, you know? This all happened in like 72 hours. And we have to make a decision sometimes. There isn't one person in this audience that hasn't said, government is so damn slow, they never make a decision.[1256.82][1256.82](LAUGHTER) They never do anything. Well, here we are, boys and girls. We're ready to make a decision. And now, all of a sudden, we're moving too fast. And I think it's just the circumstances we're under. And we need to do what you've always wanted government to do, make a decision quickly and move. And, you know, it's life, it's opportunity of a lifetime.
Mayor Protem.
I'd like to know, Jim, if, when they move this house, is there a potential for structural damage when they're moving it from one area to the other? And how do they plan on doing that? And the second question I have, and then I'll just turn it over to you, is I'd like you to again elaborate on the urgency of why we're doing this tonight.
The urgency is because the owners of the property have given us a time limit. So they've given us 30 days, and we're running into that 30 days right now. So it's less than 30 days. In regards to the first part of your question, we do have a professional mover. Staff is meeting with the company next week. We're going to go over with him as far as how we'll physically brace it and secure it for the transportation from 12th Street to the green belt, if that is the wishes of where we're located pursuant to the City Council decision tonight.
So it's not going to fall off the wagon, you know, you're moving it then, right?
No, no, my staff and I, we're going to hold it up.[1356.88][1356.88](LAUGHING)
Councilman Miller, any comments?
Yeah, I was only concerned about how we're going to move it. I didn't know if we're going to dismantle it or move it as one piece. I assume we're moving it as one piece.
It's in shape where we can, we believe we can move it in one piece. Of course, we're going to brace the sides of it and so forth to make sure we can move it. But our intention is not to dismantle it.
Okay. I definitely think we should buy it. It's not that question. I'm just concerned about the Coastal Commission, which I assume there's no concern about the Coastal Commission.
We believe that the relocation is exempt from the coastal permit requirement. And again, would note just there is a coastal permit allowing for it to be removed, that that permit is in effect right now.
Okay. And no other questions?
Okay, well, with that, I would like to say, I had the privilege of meeting with Mrs. Bliny last Friday. She was happy to donate it, but she was disappointed that she was going to have to wait because they were in the process of demolishing it when we arrived. And I was able to talk to her. She wants the same thing that we all want. She wants to keep our community and have this heritage for us. She has removed some of the items like doors and windows because she is so committed to the history of this town that she's actually going to incorporate them into her new home. So when she found out that this community would take it, would love it, would care for it, she said, then take it. And we are not buying it. It is being completely donated. It is free. The Lions are not buying it. The Lions have just offered up their 501(c)(3), their labor, their service. They've established a chairperson to receive the money for a community effort. And for that, I want to say thank you. Because often, just simply finding a 501(c)(3) is impossible. My hope and my prayer is that this will unite our community around a mutual project that we all love. A lot of thought, and it is fast, I agree with you, it's fast. But saving it from the bulldozer was a fast time, a hard time to do. And we've done that. But my prayer is that we will come together as a community and that we will see this structure come together as a community and have this as an educational museum for us, for our children, for our grandchildren, and for generations to come. So for that, I would like to make the motion that we accept both of these, what are they, resolutions that I'm taking tonight?
There's two staff recommended actions on the agenda, Mayor, but no resolutions.
So we're just making recommendations to staff?
No, you're making actual approvals. One is the approval of the terms of the donation agreement and authorizing the city manager to sign that when it's completed, subject to those terms.
Okay.
And the second would be to approve the expenditures that are listed in the staff report as well as the location of the structure on the green belt area that's been discussed.
Okay, so I would like to make both of those motions. I want to clarify on the expenses. I don't know if you got all the information you wanted on that tonight. What we're being asked to give is the amount of money that it's going to take to move the structure, which is, what did you say, 22.5?
That's correct.
Plus the additional monies that it'll take to secure the structure. So we're looking at about $60,000 is what we're asked for. And then the Lions Club will be the fundraising arm to have the money go through. They've also offered their labor. They have many skilled craftsmen and things in the Lions Club. So hopefully, there will be others that will want to join and give their time and their talents to this wonderful piece of history. So, and I did look at the placement on 8th Street. It's not going to cover the whole street. I went over yesterday and examined where, exactly where it was going to go. So it won't take your whole view corridor down the street. So that I was pleased to see. And I think this does make a historic section of the green belt, so we don't have proliferation of buildings on the green belt because the open space, as Mrs. Watson said, is crucial. Okay, so with that, I'd like to make the first motion to approve the terms of the proposed donation agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the final agreement when completed in a form acceptable to our city attorney. Do you want me to do them together, Craig?
That would be fine.
Okay. And secondly, to approve the relocation of the historic cottage to the green belt area near the red car museum and authorize the expenditures of the associated costs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Just for clarification for the council and the community in terms of the initial expenditure of approximately $60,000. Our recently adopted budget has an expenditure and assigned fund balance for buildings, and we have sufficient funding in there to cover that initial $60,000.
Thank you. All right, with that, I ask you to please vote. And that's 5-0 to save our heritage.[1708.43][1708.43](APPLAUSE) And with that, we are adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be July 13th. Thank you all for coming.